Testing one, two.
It's broadcasting?
So we have an official ribbon cutting ceremony tomorrow at 10 o'clock. You're gonna be the first one to drive across? We should have put it, sort of shoe prints in the sidewalk and the concrete saying fish here. Oh, how was the sexual offender board meeting the other morning? I forgot all about it. It's a problem. Whatever you do, this is a whole open court. They come out and say, no, you can't do that. Everybody ready?
Yep.
I got six o'clock. Alright, like to call the village board meeting in order. Everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
The pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
President Jeff Milley's.
Here.
Trustee Jay Peca.
Here.
Trustee Gary Finch.
Here.
Trustee Dylan Newman.
Here.
Trustee Jim Hirth.
Here.
Mr. President, you do have a quorum of your village board and you're in full compliance with the open meetings law.
We need the announcement of possible closed session later. Consideration and possible action on a motion to convene into executive session under Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five, Subparentheses one, Subparentheses E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specific public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, specifically the contract for waste management for refuse and recycling services in the village of Vernon, and nineteen point eight five, Sub one, Subparentheses G, for the purpose of concurring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or may be involved, specifically concerning code enforcement proceedings involving Greenmeyer property located at South eighty seven, West two three three seven five Edgewood Avenue, and Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five, Subsection one, Subparentheses D, except as provided in Statute three oh four point zero six, Section one, Subparentheses EG, and by the rule promulgated under Statute three oh four point zero six, Section one, Subparentheses EM, considering specifics, especially considering strategies for the crime retention and prevention of the village facilities. Included in the closed session will be the village board and village administrator clerk. This will require a roll call vote and no decisions will be made in closed session. Public comments? Any public comments? No public comments? Moving on to miscellaneous matters. First one will be the fire department Pierce Engine seventeen repairs. Chief, you wanna give us an update?
Good evening. As you guys are aware, we've had some discussions with the administrator and with the president about some maintenance issues we're having with one of our apparatus, Engine seventeen. It's our two thousand eleven Pierce. Earlier this year during the course of some preventive maintenance and some repairs, Pierce identified that there was some corrosion on the frame of the apparatus. That started off a series of evaluations, some discussions with Pierce about the extent of the problem. Eventually, we brought a representative from Pierce down to our station, one of their refurbishment specialists out of Wayooga. They did a bumper to bumper frame evaluation of the vehicle. At the end of that evaluation, their recommendation was to replace the frame rails or take the vehicle out of service. They felt that the location of the corrosion was placing undue stress on some vital parts of the suspension, and they could not give us a timeframe nor a really good idea as to how long it would last or if it was something that we could put off for a little bit. They felt that it should be addressed basically immediately. We've since had some more discussions with them. We did receive a quote from them to do a frame restoration. That number was pretty substantial, as you had seen in a quote a couple of weeks ago that was sent, correct Karen?
Yeah.
A couple of weeks ago. I've also included that as part of this kind of follow up in memo. And essentially, I guess we're here tonight to maybe talk about some of our options. I wanted to give you a little more information as to where we're at, so that we have kind of a wide picture of what we have as a challenge. First of all, the age of the apparatus. Engine seventeen is fifteen years old right now. It is, it was the first apparatus that we bought after we had our division or dissolution from the old Big Ben Vernon Fire Department. And it was a stock apparatus that was customized in a very short amount of time to give us what we needed at that time. We have developed, from the beginning of the department as the Vernon Fire Department, we have developed a apparatus replacement plan, which has been based on NFPA recommendations as well as some of the realities and some of the uniqueness of the village of Vernon or the town of Vernon at the time. Fifteen years is what the NFPA standard is for the life of a frontline apparatus. We, over the course of developing our plan, had decided that twenty years is probably a little bit more realistic due to the nature of our environment. We're in a more rural area versus an urban area, and our call volume is not, you know, excessive compared to some other metro departments that are running a lot of calls. The apparatus is obviously used every day. It's our primary first response vehicle for EMS calls, some automatic alarm, CO calls, things like that. It's our second out apparatus for a structure fire. We have another engine that's obviously our pump retender, which carries an excessive amount of water, carries twenty-five hundred gallons. This engine carries fifteen hundred. At the time, that was all we could go to in terms of capacity for the frame and for the axles. So when we purchased this rig, our goal was to have it for about twenty years. Expect the life, as I said, of the apparatus per NFPA is fifteen years, and that's based on recommendations of a technical committee. So we had some discussions with Pierce as well about what's the likely or what's the feasibility of doing a frame replacement versus just opting to replace the rig completely. There's some pros and cons to both sides of that, I guess, that opinion. The quote we received was based on doing a frame restoration, as I said. They came in right at about three hundred thousand dollars to do a frame restoration, as you can imagine. The cost of labor has skyrocketed since, you know, since the late, you know, since two thousand eighteen and COVID. This repair probably before that would have been in a one fifty to one twenty range, but now that labor has become so expensive, they estimated and gave us a rough number of about three hundred thousand dollars, minus any other additional repairs or some other things that they identified through the assessment of the apparatus that they felt that would be considerations for us to look at and fix. So those are also included in there, and then they also came with the recommendation that we allocate about approximately twenty percent or so, and their wording was at least twenty percent for unanticipated costs or unanticipated problems that they find when they start tearing a rig apart. If you look at the quote, you'll see that it's very extensive. It's basically everything comes off the frame. Every part of the vehicle that is considered a wear part is going to be replaced. They, it's gonna take probably three to four months to accomplish that. And then when they put everything back together, many of the components are new, but there's still gonna be a lot of existing components that are going to be, at that point, it'd be probably fifteen, well, probably sixteen to seventeen years by the time everything's said and done with the project. That would still be older, older things. So basically, at the end of the day, when we, if we would opt to do a frame restoration project, we're looking at probably about three hundred and sixty to three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, minus any unknown problems with the pump or any of the drivetrain issues that would happen to come up. So that's kind of where we're at with that. If we broke that down over an additional five years of life for the vehicle for the twenty year period, you're looking at about seventy-five thousand dollars per year is what would be the actual cost to keep that vehicle in service. If we would opt to go with a new apparatus, we would probably take the avenue of going to a stock apparatus, which most of the vendors or most of the manufacturers now, Rev Group or Pierce or Oshkosh, have started to try to market that as an option for departments. Right now, if we would do a custom build on a piece of apparatus, we're looking at about three to four years as wait time. We don't have three to four years with the condition of the current apparatus that we have. So we would probably look to utilize part of their stock program. We've done some initial research on that. We found that in the ballpark, most of those costs are right about nine hundred thousand or so, depending on what type of options that we would opt to go with, engine size, things like that. The other thing is that if you do a stock program, there's obviously a limit on what you can do in terms of customization. We would have to decide and as a command staff and as a department, figure out what those concessions are and if it's something we can live with. The most, the biggest impact we'd probably have would be that we'd have a little bit less tank water. We'd probably go from fifteen hundred to a thousand gallons of water. Other than that, we could probably make a stock rig work pretty well. The flip side of that is that now you have a vehicle that is due for replacement in two thousand thirty-one. We'd be replacing it according to our plan about five years early, but according to NFPA, it would be due for replacement in two thousand twenty-six. So that would bring us into recommendations with NFPA. If we would look at that cost over the course of a twenty year service life, it's about forty-five thousand dollars per year. So I guess just a little bit of a comparison. And then we obviously would look to broker out the vehicle that we currently have. We've started that process to try to get an appraisal done on that. We're not sure where that would be just because of the known issues with the frame. Our Pierce rep felt that there might be a company out there that might want to buy it and try to do that on their own. We did, and I think, Jim, you asked about having another vendor look at, getting a bid from them. We talked with the Rev Group, which is a consortium of a bunch of different fire truck manufacturers. We talked with one of their reps, and they won't touch it. Because of the liability and because of proprietary, the frame rails are proprietary through Pierce, the cost would be very excessive, and then they'd have to buy all the Pierce parts through a third party market as well, and they said it would be cost prohibitive to do. And then secondly, they didn't want to deal with the liability of having any type of, you know, issue with quality of work, reliability with the frame, the parts, the components, all those different things. So essentially, we're, if we'd want to do a frame restoration, we're gonna be sole sourcing that to Pierce, who is the manufacturer of the apparatus. So with all those things said, I guess we probably, probably a lot of questions that you guys have, hopefully we can answer them. If we can't, we'll try to find the answers to those questions so that we can kind of come up with a decision where we are. You know, right now, fire apparatus is one of those things that is, has become really a challenge for the fire service. The manufacturers have, I think, have really inflated their price over the last several years. There's been some political pressure from the federal level to try to rein some of that in. And then honestly, a lot of communities in the last several years have opted to hold back on purchases, and now where that volume wasn't before, there are now a lot more departments looking to place orders. And that creates a supply and demand issue and a supply chain issue, and just the ability of, I'll use Pierce as the example, to turn out a product. They can only make so many, you know, vehicles per year, and that's where that backlog comes in. There's some departments that are gonna wait three to four to five years for certain types of apparatus. So that's where the stock option is now becoming a lot more appealing for some departments, for some organizations or communities to say, you know what, we would like to build a stock truck. There's a little bit more cost involved with that, maybe get a cabinet in a different spot that you like. Maybe there's something that you want to add that maybe is not standard on a stock vehicle. So those are things that, again, everything's a compromise, everything's gonna be, what can you live with or what can you utilize? I think that we just owe it to our community that we have a piece of equipment that's reliable. We owe it to our people to have something that's safe, that they can operate and feel confident driving down the road. And so no matter which way we want to go, we need to make a decision as to how we move forward. This is ironically a good time of the year to do it because it's end of year for manufacturers. There might be some incentive. Pierce did give us some incentive. They knocked ten percent off the cost of the frame restoration if we had opted to, or do opt to do that. We've also had some discussion about them about creating some incentive if we would buy a stock rig, and they've given us some assurances that they will work with us on that if that's why we opt to go. And then I attached, just again for your review, a copy of the quote. The only difference that on the base, on the base plan would be if we opted to go for what they call an E-coded frame versus a galvanized frame. About ten thousand dollars more if you go galvanized. My question to our representative on that was, what's the benefit of the ten thousand dollars? He said that they feel that the galvanized provides a little bit better protection for the frame itself, and that the life of the vehicle, it's probably gonna be a little bit more resistant to corrosion. The other thing I'm sure you guys are thinking is I asked them, well, why did this happen? Pierce has had, and all manufacturers through the early teens, through like ten through like thirteen, that were manufacturing vehicles, had a lot of issues with corrosion on frames. Several departments in Illinois tried to do a class action lawsuit against them because they felt that it was a poor product. I don't, that really didn't go anywhere with the exception of some incentives for buying new vehicles or doing work to fix them. But they said there's a multitude of reasons. I think personally, it's poor quality metal, but also they have cited that a lot of highway departments are using brine-based materials on roads. That's creating, when it's cold, it adheres to the bottom of the vehicles. And their recommendation now is that when a vehicle comes back from a call, that you should do an underbody flush on it every time. So that's the response to that. They have informed us that their process and their manufacturing process now has eliminated those problems that they had in the past. So moving forward, I would, you know, obviously this would not be hopefully something we have to deal with in our twenty years. It also, from a awareness standpoint, we were unaware that it was occurring. It basically started from underneath the coating and then kind of, I guess, festered, you could say, to the outside and then started to cause corrosion and separation of the frame. We have a couple of spots on the frame that are about approximately three quarters of an inch off the frame from where it was seen because of the corrosion that's between the two seams. So that's what they have a lot of concern about. So we're in the process right now of deciding if we're gonna put it into, we're gonna take it out of service or not. I've got a couple more calls into our rep to have some more discussions about some potential other options, but I don't think there are. And we're looking at making a decision whether we take it out of service or not for the short term to decide what we want to do with it. We do. We do. That vehicle is a two thousand six. That was due for replacement in twenty-six. Because we've got that one in a reserve status, it's not frontline anymore, we had opted to push back that purchase for a little bit. But that vehicle is one that we could make some modifications to and utilize in the short term. But again, it's a two thousand six, so that's already twenty plus years. It's gonna be twenty plus years old. So the other thing we've found is as these vehicles get a little bit older, they get, it seems like it's ironic to get past that fifteen year point, you really start to get a lot more maintenance issues developing with them, and we start to start to chase some of those problems.
No, I'm glad to hear that they're doing something to try to get the frame to last fifteen years, rusting out now.
Well, and it was one of those things that started to develop, I mean, vehicles that were ten, eleven vintage, were in two thousand seventeen, even fifteen, sixteen were starting to already have corrosion issues, and they're like, whoa, what's going on? And it caused a lot of frustration down, especially in the northern Illinois area, where they had a large, large area that was a pretty heavy Pierce. And E-one as well, where they're having, these vehicles are having a lot of frame issues. And, you know, and the manufacturers are trying to figure out how and why. They're not gonna admit to you that it's, you know, substandard materials, but we know where all their equipment's, where all their materials are coming from, so.
Here's my thoughts on it. I mean, there's been a lot of discussion again in other quotes trying to get it fixed. Truck that's only got five more years, spending this kind of money, it's kind of foolish. Whatever we, even if somebody does else do it, labor is the most expensive part of all of it. So it's not gonna be a huge savings if you do find somebody. But secondly, as you start tearing apart stuff, you're gonna find more things wrong that you should be replacing just to get five more years out of this truck.
And in a fifteen year old truck, it doesn't ain't gonna have to do, have anything to do with the corrosion for them to find things that...
We, just this last month, we had a, we had a problem with the coolant system. We had a bunch of hoses that failed. The guys at the DPW, Joe and those guys, actually, we had a coolant hose fail on the scene of a call. They came out and they kind of band-aided it together and got it back and did some repairs for us. DPW guys have been phenomenal. They've done a great job for the stuff that they can do. But there's also some specialized stuff in terms of fire apparatus. We've had some issues with some electrical stuff. We're having a problem with one of the radios right now in that engine. So, you know, those are all things that you start getting to that fifteen, twenty year mark are really gonna start to be problematic. You know, and again, I guess there is a reason why NFPA recommends fifteen years. Maybe they've done some studies, I don't know, but, you know, it's one of those things that, you know, we want to make sure we have reliable and safe equipment for our people. The last thing we want to do is have something fail on the way to a call or at a call or when we need it, and now we're dealing with, you know, a bad outcome.
You know, one thing that they're gonna say, okay, it's good for another ten years, and the money's gonna exist.
No, no. And there's been a lot of, since two thousand eleven, there's been a lot of safety technologies. There's been inclusion of airbags into fire apparatus now, things like that, where we don't have that with the older apparatus. So it's, there's a lot of advantages to opting to go to a stock rig. My hope would be that we could, if we did opt to go that route, is we could maybe get some money out of the old one, you know, short of taking it to the scrapyard. I think that there's probably gonna be a vendor out there or some type of third party broker that's gonna want to buy it and try to take it down south somewhere where they can, and that's where a lot of our trucks go. A lot of our trucks end up in the southern part of the country where they're, you know, they're upgrading from a fifty-four Mack, and they're like, oh, alright, you know, we got a truck.
Brand new truck.
It's a brand new truck to them. So, you know, that's part of it. I think that our rep at Pierce, Reliant Manufacturing or Reliant Fire Apparatus out of, they're based out of Slinger. We've had a good relationship with them since we split, before we split the department. They've been very honest and very forthright with what they feel we're looking at as a challenge. You know, I value their opinion a lot. They're not just looking to sell a truck. I mean, honestly, they'd probably work out, or they'd come out better in a deal if they said, hey, refurb it and then get rid of it in five years and then we sell you another truck. So it's one of those things that I think that they've been very honest and forthright. They've been very, our rep's been very upfront about trying to work Pierce over to get us some more additional funding off. Say, hey, you gotta knock some off of here and stuff like that.
Could we, if we do end up ordering a new truck once we get that truck, could we sell the eleven and the six potentially?
So we could get rid of both of them. We're currently in an agreement with Waterford for, I think, another two years? Where we share that two thousand six is a spare apparatus between both departments.
Okay.
So in, back in the mid-teens, we, they were in, they were kind of in a position where they had no spare apparatus. So they, at the time, we had it evaluated and they said it was worth about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we worked out in agreement with the village of Waterford that they could buy into that vehicle and utilize as a spare apparatus for seventy-five thousand dollars for a ten year period. So basically about a seven, seventy-five hundred dollar a year cost for them to have the ability to have a spare apparatus. So we would probably have to wait for that.
Two years?
That, yeah, that agreement to expire. That agreement, I think, also calls for that, at the end of that, we determine between the communities how we're gonna get rid of it. I would, I think that it's in good shape, and it doesn't have any frame issues, that we could utilize it and keep it in a spare, in a spare role so that we have a backup apparatus. There's, it's, on a frequent basis, we will have maintenance being done on one of the other two, that we try to bring that one in, and we also utilize that apparatus for our driver training and things that's gotta go to WCTC.
What's the Arrow, the Pierce Arrow?
Pierce Arrow? Are you...
Two thousand eighteen Pierce Arrow XT.
So that is our Engine eighteen. That was, our Engine eighteen is a, what was called a glided kit. In two thousand seventeen, we needed another fire engine. So we had a existing fire truck that we had bought from New Berlin for a very, very competitive price. We took the pump, the transmission, and the engine out of that vehicle, and we transferred it over to a new frame, new body, everything for Engine eighteen. That was called the glider kit. Since we've done that, the last couple of years now, the manufacturers have been dissuaded from doing that because of some federal guidelines that they can't re-chassis things. And it's related to the over-the-road trucking industry where they would, a trucker would go and he'd buy a brand new cab and frame and everything. He'd take his non-emissions pre-whatever two thousand four engine and with three million miles on it, dump it into a new frame and body and drive the old engine because there's no emissions. So they've come back and they've said that you can't do that anymore. There's some things they can do. You can get... You can get kind of extensive with repairs and things like that, but they don't do the glider program like they used to do. Because that, we saved probably almost $400,000 for Vernon when we did that.
What is that engine used for? Like, what's the difference? So the two, the two top ones, the 2011, 2006 have, are similar purpose, right?
So the 2011 and the 2018. Sorry. The 2011 and the 2018, Engine 18 and Engine 17 are our frontline fire apparatus for calls. Engine 18 is utilized for structure fires because it carries 2,500 gallons of water. Because we have no fire hydrants anywhere in the village. So we have to bring our water with us. So what we did is in 2017, when we started this project, our goal was to create an apparatus that would carry more water because prior to that, it was common to go to a fire, start operations and run out of water. And we knew that with limited manpower, people not coming back even back then, that we needed to be able to bring more water to the fire. So we carry 2,500 gallons on that vehicle. What that does is it creates a tandem axle, creates a vehicle that's a lot slower and it's a lot of weight that's put on to the vehicle in terms of use. So that vehicle doesn't go out on everyday responses. Sorry, it doesn't go out on everyday responses. It goes on structure fire calls for us and auto aid for Maguano and for New Berlin and Village of Waukesha if it's a reported structure fire. And then in the flip side, they send us kind of the same thing they send us water because we don't have any hydrants. And then Engine 17 responds to EMS calls, rubbish fires, things like that.
Thank you.
So there's, there's a lot of different options out there right now. There's a lot of smaller companies that are trying to get into the game. The big three, obviously, are, you know, Pierce is the largest manufacturer. Emergency One is part of the Rev Group, they're another large manufacturer. They're out of Florida. There's a couple out east. Sutfin are smaller companies. Seagrave is in Wisconsin as well. Marion's in Wisconsin. There's several smaller companies. But a lot of those companies, because of their size, don't do a lot with the stock programs. So it kind of limits what we have if we want to go with the option of going with a stock versus a custom build. The problem with the custom build is it's going to be three years, four years, whatever it's going to be. I think it's 36 to 40 some months right now. So we'd probably look at one of the, we'd probably look at one of the bigger ones. I have a lot of reservation about going to a, I don't want to say an off-brand, but I think you get, there's a lot to be said about the quality of the craftsmanship with the bigger companies. Seagrave has had nothing but problems. City of Franklin had an order with them for two vehicles and they canceled it because they kept getting pushed to the back of the line because of bigger departments like New York. So there's been a lot of frustration in the fire service about trying to get things done. Pierce doesn't do that. Pierce, if, you know, City of Milwaukee right now is having a huge, huge deal with trying to get some apparatus. Their fleet is in, you read the papers, in dire condition. And they've already approached Pierce to say, hey, can we, you know, get to the front of the line? They're like, nope. You order your rigs, here's where you are. But that's where the stock program comes into play because, again, if you can make some concessions and say, hey, we can work with this. You know, we would like to have 1,500 gallons of water on our engine, but if we go with 1,000, we have the other truck for the structure fires. So things have kind of changed a little bit from when we first split and we were first trying to kind of bring things into an organized plan. So I think that if we opted to do the stock route, we would be able to turn something around in a short amount of time, probably first part of next year, according to what they have on some of their sheets right now. It changes every day. They drop a new list at the first of the month. So there should probably be some new stuff coming around. So that's one of the considerations. And we've had some discussions that we want to maybe talk about that with Pierce. I like the fact that Pierce is made in Wisconsin. It's, with the exception of these frame issues, which was not just Pierce, it was industry-wide. I think they have a solid workforce. They build a very good product. We've got three heavy apparatus built by them with, with the exception of this frame issue, really not had any substantial issues. It's also nice to know that I have the vendor who built the truck an hour and a half from here that we can get in the car and drive up there if we have to or drive something up there. So it's, I kind of like the fact that it's a Wisconsin product. Yeah, and that's been, you know, there's been other departments in our area that have opted to go with different vendors or different companies and have had substantial maintenance issues where now you're paying to truck a vehicle down to Florida and that's not cheap. Versus even if you have to have it towed somewhere in Wisconsin, it's going to be a lot, lot more cost-effective than having it taken somewhere else. And again, it's one of those things that, I think they make a good product. I think this was one of those things that everyone learns from. And I think that the manufacturers, all of them, have changed the processes that they use now, changed some of the ways that they, you know, construct a piece of apparatus. And I think that if we want to get a replacement onboard or get this project done, hopefully Pierce will be the most competitive as well. And we would definitely make them be competitive in terms of. Yes. And I can, I cannot, I don't have any qualms with the quality of the service we receive, the attention. You know, we're a small department. We buy a truck every, you know, say 10, 15 years. And we're treated the same as a large city department because that's how they value their customer relationship. It will be. I mean, I don't know what the number's going to be, but I'm not expecting to get half a million dollars for this truck. It's not, it's just, it's not going to happen. And there have been other departments that have been in some of these positions where their trucks have been in a lot worse condition that they pretty much drove them right into a scrapyard. Stripped them and drove them right into a scrapyard. So. Well, and that's a challenge at anything. I mean, it's like Jeff said, it's, you know, everything's great when it's new, but when it breaks or when it's 25 years old, you know, and again, we were trying to be realistic when we looked at the life service or the service lives of these vehicles that, you know, our tender doesn't go out every day. That's why we've opted to say, you know what? We're going to, we plan to keep the thing for 20 to 25 years, but we're maintaining it well. You know, every seven years, we've got to put new tires on it because that's a DOT thing. And we do those things and by having a good preventive maintenance program, we find some problems and we have to, you know, expend some funds to fix those. But in the long run, I think we're saving money and we're providing a safe piece of equipment for our people in the community so that we, one day, a guy doesn't go and hit the brakes and slides through an intersection.
I think everybody's said their piece and we're all on the same page here. I'm more interested in, I'm more interested in how we're going to finance it and what the interest rates are like. If Pierce does any in-house or if they work with anybody financing in-house.
I believe Oshkosh Capital does, but I can follow up with that and get back to you guys on that.
Yeah, I'm just curious, you know, what the rates are like. If we go to borrow $300,000 to stick it in, we're going to get it to terrible rate. It's just like buying a used car, you're going to get a bad rate versus buying a new piece of equipment. I mean, I have a 0% loan on my Skidsteer right now.
Because it's brand-new?
I've got a year left on it and things still works great, but it's still 0% financing. You just don't get better than that. Now, I'm not expecting to get 0% on a fire truck, but if we can get into better rates, we're going to gain some ground on that one as well.
Does Rev Group build fire engines?
So Rev Group is, they're actually based in Brookfield, Wisconsin. And they're, they kind of have a conglomerate of a bunch of different vendors. E1's the biggest one.
What do you think of them?
You know, I, fire trucks are kind of like the Dodge, Ford and Chevy type of thing. There's different things. I think that when you look at the workforce, and again, I don't want to insult anyone, but I think that what I've seen out of products, Pierce, and again, this is my own opinion because a guy who likes an E1 is going to say it's totally opposite, E1's better than Pierce. But I think that the quality and work of a Pierce product is a little bit more superior than some of the others. And I'm not going to call it a specific vendor, but I think that some of their workmanship is a little better. The components are, a lot of the components they start with are all the same, right? I mean, it's an engine by a Cummings or Detroit Diesel or Allison Transmission or Waterus Hail Pump, things like that. So I think some of that is where it ends up being. And I think some of it also just comes down to what have you had as an experience and what have you had good and bad with experiences?
Have you had any?
I've had some, I've had some challenges with E1 apparatus at other departments I've worked at. I've had some challenges with some Pierce's too. And I've had some horrible experiences with some other companies that are, would not be on my list of, hey, I'm going to get a, I want to get a quote from you. I think the other thing would be to, if we do the stock route, we're obviously, we're not just going to sole source it to Pierce, but we're going to look at everyone out there who has something and see what the numbers look like. I mean, if there's a huge discrepancy, we can't just say we want, you know, a Pierce because it's, you know, it's Pierce. Versus unless there's something that we can really justify for that, you know, whether it's a pump or it's an engine or capabilities, you know, because there are some things you've got to make apples to apples, right? You can't compare a 400 horsepower engine to a 605. So those are some of the things, but we would definitely look to see what's out there and obviously try to maximize our buying power, so to speak. I don't want to spend a nickel more than we have to. But, you know, in the same point, we want to get something that we feel confident that we don't buy something and then five years later, we're coming back to you and you're yelling at us or you're like, what, you know, why'd you guys do this? Because I know departments that have bought certain companies that are fire apparatus and they regret it. So.
If we could pick a few to just look into.
Absolutely.
That won't create conflict with Waterford, right?
No, because we're using it as a spare. I mean, that's what it's there for. We've actually had it for several months now because we're doing some preventive maintenance on it. We are waiting for some parts from Reliant right now. For the Ladder-X, we've got some issues and some things. So we've been working on getting some of that stuff repaired as well. So we'll, I'll just communicate with their fire chief that we've had an unforeseen circumstance and we're using it. I do. You guys should have gotten report, the monthly report. I don't know if you have any questions on it.
It was sent after the packet was done. I emailed it, but sometimes.
I can just, a couple of things briefly. What's that? It's on the website. DPW did a nice job. They, or they did the best they could. They came and did some patchwork for us in the parking lot. No broken ankles yet, but they did some patchwork for us that was really, really needed. And it's a short-term fix, but we appreciate them helping us out. As I said earlier during this discussion, Engine 17 did go in. We had a chicken jelly come on on Engine 17. It went in because it was running really rough. We had some, we had something with the air intake valve that was bad. They also replaced the power steering reservoir that was leaking. Couple of calls of interest. We had a structure fire. Actually, no, we had our own structure fire where we had appliance fire in the house. Our mutual aid came in and helped us. We were able to cancel everything shortly after that. We got on scene and basically the fire was out and we did some ventilation. We also had about five different instances where we had simultaneous calls. We've been getting a little bit more of that now where we're on one call and we get another call. What we do, just so you guys are aware, is if we can't, we don't know if we have anyone available that come from home, which is very, very limited, we will automatically call for a mutual aid ambulance right away. And then we'll utilize that department as we need based on area geographic location to the call. And that works for structure fires and for EMS calls. So we've got a good working relationship with our neighbors and they will come help us like we help them. And I think that's about it, unless you've got any specific questions. Yeah, so what we're doing, just, we're in a process right now. We've had, we're changing RMS systems. So we're kind of in a flux period right now where we're trying to, we went to a different records management system that was cheaper and a much better product than what we're dealing with with our current company. And we're having some issues with getting the data transmitted from Waukesha County to our system. There's three departments that we went on, we basically went together with to facilitate the switch over to this different RMS system. Once we get that up and running, we're going to be able to be a lot more detailed as what we have for calls. Your report, excuse me, the report's going to look a lot different. We're going to change it. So just ask for a little bit of time on that, that we're going to change the format. We're going to change how it looks. It's going to be a little bit more detailed in types of calls and things like that because it's going to be a little bit more automated to where we can run a report, print it out and attach it as a PDF. So that we just, we've been working on that. It's just that it's been frustrating and it's taken a little longer than normal for us to get that done. And Catherine Stolorff kind of coordinates that and he's done a good job. And he's just, we're working to try to massage that together. No, no. We look at a stock, stock vehicle. They, not that we're going to, again, it's not like going to Lynch and picking out a pickup truck, right? And saying, hey, we'll take that one. But, I wish it was, but they do have, they do have some stock apparatus on the ground at their 41. Their 41 plant is in Appleton, that's where they build most of their trucks. And they come up with a list of those things. So I had a list three weeks ago of vehicles that are available right now. And some of them are demos, some of them are just stock trucks, some of them are, there's even a couple that were returned back. There was an electric truck that came back that was used in Madison that they're trying to sell now. But it's not something that we would want. And so there's a lot of different stuff that way, but we would try to, again, we're running in a spare apparatus. I want to, we want to consolidate this, that we're not waiting three years. We can't, we can't wait three years for a truck. So it would be a stock truck. Yes, yes, 26. And like Mr. Hertz said, we'll talk at Oshkosh Capital and see what they have to offer. Because I know they do have some incentives and some ability. They're a pretty big company. Thank you. Oh, sorry, fellas. They can keep up. They do a great job for us, too. Very happy with our contract, guys.
I don't think we have anything for you guys. I know you guys got our October stats. So if there's any questions from those. Yeah, October wasn't too bad.
November was nice.
Yeah, November was lovely so far.
Deputy Dylan's wife had his baby, wish him well.
He did, yep. He's out for a little bit.
When does he come back? I know it's two months.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure, like, when he's back. I think it's right around the beginning of the year. Yeah, I'm not exactly sure, like, when he's back. I think it's right around the beginning of the year.
He had a little girl, a cute little girl. Yeah, I sent him a card.
Very nice.
From you guys, you saw it.
All right, thanks, guys. Appreciate it. If you guys don't mind, let's deviate also to the.
Bye, guys. Stay safe.
We have Mike here from North Prairie.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Mike, you want us to have a seat right up there? Are you comfortable there? Mike, you know Dylan, don't you?
Yeah. Seen him a couple times.
All right, so just to kind of figure out where we're at, the last budget that you guys disapproved was that the 5% and 4% pay raises for the clerk? That was? Okay. So we can speak on, on that and then how the budget has looked. So I sent your village administrator the budget for this year, which was sent up to us the year prior. All right, so the previous year, we had the clerk's salary at $12,000 and the assistant clerk at, at $4,000. And we've brought that down. So their original budget that they first proposed was $18,000, which was a 50% increase and a 25% increase for the assistant clerk's salary. That one got voted down as well. And then at our last budget meeting that we had, we were all in agreeance to bringing it down to the, the 5% and the 4%, which would put the court clerk at $12,600 and the assistant clerk at $4,160. So during my time on the board, we took a look at the, how the court is operated and what North Prairie has done with the court. And we have found that we have not really done anything with the court. So my first findings are, we looked into if we had a lease agreement for the court that we house, and we didn't. So I asked some questions to our board members about that process and what we've done in order to make sure that we're charging a fair amount for utilization of our village hall. And there was nothing done in the past. So we had a commercial real estate agent come through. We measured out all the, the area that was utilized for the court, which is, you know, once a month. But then we also have a dedicated office in our village hall for the clerk to go ahead and, you know, do her work, have, you know, people that have to pay off violations come in and make payment and whatnot. But we originally got our number from the commercial real estate agent at $13,392, which is way higher than the original $4,600. And doing some digging, we haven't raised our price to house the court for the services that we provide in about two decades. Which is a little bit of a negligence on behalf of our previous boards. And with the current board, we're just trying to make things more right and fair. And I know that, you know, you guys utilize the court just about as much as we do. You know, you guys are about 8%, 9% and we're at 8%, 9% as well. Which makes us, I'd probably say the second, third lowest users compared to Maguano and the Village of Eagle, which are definitely the highest users. So that got pushed down. Actually, a representative from the village of, or the town of Maguano proposed a 25% increase, which brought it to the $5,750 mark. I was not in favor of that. However, I do like that at least it's going in the right direction from decades of not having any increases. We also added on a village clerk billing of $3,600 because there's a lot of overflow work that stems out of the court. That gets put onto North Prairie's plate, which is a tremendous burden because we already, you know, pay our village administrator and our assistant clerk to do the Village of North Prairie operations. And when overflow work from the court comes in, that takes away, you know, time that we pay them to do stuff for the Village of North Prairie. And we're looking for, we have been looking for ways to go ahead and, and bill the court. I've had, you know, previous meetings with the Joint Municipal Court on how we should do that. And it was all in agreeance that we should be billing the court for overflow work. And we went ahead and we documented, and we have spreadsheets on all the time that our clerk goes ahead and has to attend to court matters. And we figured that the $3,600 mark was justifiable in that. So those are, are the two main things. So this compensation has been long overdue for the Village of North Prairie. And coming from our standpoint and our village board, it's, we take the, we take the brunt of the load of the court. You know, I'm not too sure how many hours, you know, your village administrator has to put into, you know, doing any kind of work other than, you know, depositing a check or receiving a check and, and moving forward. But it's, it's substantially a pretty big headache for our village. So that's why we're trying to get a little financial compensation out of that. All the other boards have voted through this current agreement.
They all approved it, correct?
Correct, yep. You know, so essentially it's, you know, it would just be a 9% out of the, you know, upping the utilities and maintenance to $5,750 and the portion of the village clerk billing that we do for the year.
It's about $1,000. 9% of those two added, that's about $1,000 bucks or something.
So it's not a whole lot, but at least it's tracking in, in the right direction.
How many decades has this court been running? Because we haven't been there that long.
I can't, yeah, I mean, I, I'd be shooting from the hip if I knew the exact amount of, number of years that it's been running there. But since its inception, it's been out of our, our village hall. And I mean, Dylan's been at, you know, some of the meetings where we've had conversations with the town of Maguano and the Village of Eagle, or, yeah, the Village of Eagle of me and our village asking them, like, can you guys house this court, please? You guys are the biggest users. We kind of really like this off of our plate since we only utilize it 9% of the time, you know? And there's really been no traction there. So we're kind of, you know, stuck with it per the agreement, as long as that will, will stand. But I guess this is kind of just like a last-ditch effort to try to make things right in order to keep the Joint Municipal Court intact and, and running as it has been running because we have had other trustees on the board ask to have discussions and or actions on possibly removing ourselves from the Joint Municipal Court. So it's kind of just like a last-ditch effort to try to make sense on it, to keep operating out of our facility. But we just need to make sure that, you know, it's fair financially for us to house it.
How do you feel about it?
Well, to be clear, we're talking about this budget now, so you guys are all on the same page. The one that has the highlighted green, 5% and 4% raises for the clerk and assistant clerk. My, my personal opinion, I, I do believe the village clerk billing is, is important to them. And I don't think we should take away from that at all. Utilities and maintenance, when Mike and I were going back and forth, I threw out the number 12.5% because it's exactly half of 24%, which I think is what the raise is, is 24%. Or 25%, sorry. And I, I was the number, I was the person who threw out the number 5% and 4% because I couldn't believe the, the 50% raises for salaries. So I really can't complain too much about those.
Yeah, I remember, you know, during our conversation, I specifically asked you, you know, I said, you know, in order for you to take this back to your board, because I think they dropped their salaries down to 30% and 25% after we didn't approve the, the first one that they, that they presented. You know, and everybody else was in the grants except for us on that pay raise. And I asked you, you know, what do you think would be a realistic pay increase for the clerk and the assistant clerk? And then that's when we had the conversation and everybody was in agreeance on the, the 5% and the 4%.
I mean, I, I do think it's still a little high, but I, but I also hate to go back to last year's budget and, and wow, stiff everybody else over 9% if that makes sense.
Right.
You want to make a motion?
Well, I'm curious how you guys feel about the utilities and maintenance. That's really the only hangup for me.
Utilities and maintenance and stuff, it's stuff that just comes along and running the place.
Well, it's essentially a rent increase that they're doing for us.
I tell you what, I'll, I'll just make the motion to accept the existing, you know, 4% and 5% increase.
Accept this budget here.
Yeah. Make the motion to accept that budget.
Any further discussion? All favor to motion?
Aye.
Both, motion passes.
Mr. President, the only thing I do have to do, and Mike, just so that you know, on the next board agenda, I'll put that you'll rescind because you already have a motion, a standing motion to deny. And now you have a standing motion to approve. So the next agenda, we'll put on to rescind the previous motion, so it's clear. Just so you know, Mike, I mean, it's a technical thing, but just to keep them compliant.
All right, and then.
They would be rescinding the denial.
Okay, and then, I mean, I'll let everybody on our board know as well, and then will you send a?
Yes.
Email to Evelyn as well.
Do you want me to send it to your administrator and to Holly, or do you want?
Yeah, probably to, probably to both would be good.
Yeah, and the committee. Does that sound good?
All right, thanks for your time.
Nice meeting you, Mike.
Hopefully you're not here all night.
We're already setting the record. Yeah, right.
Moving on to appoint Dylan Newman to chair the December 4th meeting, since I will be absent.
I'll make the motion to appoint Dylan Newman to chair the December 4th, 2025 Village Board Meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
I'll abstain.
Hearing none, all favor to motion?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes with Dylan abstaining. Just really build that agenda up next.
Put some big words in the agenda.
Make the first paragraph he has to read.
Okay.
All right, the LPI contract for the village newsletter.
Mr. President, I did talk to LPI and they, the, based upon the ads that they sold, we'll have to do four, four, for the next year also, just to keep our sponsorship up. They did, they did stop billing us, I forgot about this, in June of this last year, so we only paid for two newsletters. They will not charge us any more printing for the newsletter. And based upon some of our sponsorship, they're going to try to help us out with postage and the stapling and stuff, so. And I was going to try, after we get all the budget and tax stuff done, I've got another idea for more sponsors. So the more sponsors we get, that, that will assist. The postage you'll see is about $1,000. And then the newsletter isn't technically out yet, but I've already had two residents call and give me their, or email me their email address, and I send that to LPI. And they secure it, they don't give it, they don't sell them, they just sign them up so the newsletter, we don't have to pay the postage on the newsletter. And, and as soon as it's transmitted, it goes to the residents that sign up for it. So we'll keep working on that to, anything to lower the cost.
So this time next year, we'll look at going to, if we want.
Possibly, yeah, two.
Yeah, how soon do they need to know for year 27, how many we're going to do this, when they start selling ads?
Like in August, we'd, you know, we have it toggled on both of our calendars to talk because it's going to take us, the four will take us through, you know, this entire 2026. Right, right, because you want to be fair to the sponsors.
The only other question is too, if they do sell enough ads, would it seem self-sufficient to pay for itself? If they still want to have four?
Have we ever been at that point, though?
Had done too, oh, yeah.
Where it's paid for itself?
Oh, no. This is, that's why we had, we had LPI years ago, but they dropped us because they couldn't sell any ads. And then we've, we've worked real hard to, to get sponsorship. And, and it is paying for the printing, which, believe it or not, color printing on, on the newsletter, it's not cheap. So that, it's covered that. And when they looked at the statistics, she felt they could give us some type of token on the, on the postage also, which is nice. Then there's a small fee, about $300 every news, newsletter to fold it and tab it. So that's what they're looking for, assisting in that cost also.
Do we need a quarterly newsletter? I mean, if we do, we do.
We don't have, I mean, if you look at some, no offense, some of the other communities that have fairs and conventions and chambers and, you know, a lot more going on. Nothing against Vernon, it's a, it's a great little community. But I would think two would be sufficient, but I wouldn't want to do anything to the people that paid to have, you know, four times a year.
It used to be four was the reason for Park and Rec.
Oh, sure.
To get the activities and what.
But we're not doing that anymore.
And even when we did that, you know, the young kids today, they don't, they go on their phones or their tabs, you know, and they don't. And, and Maguano is fabulous about, once they've got your email, they broadcast emails all the time for the parents and grandparents, so.
They do their own Park and Rec newsletter itself, right?
Yeah, and then they have a great broadcasting system to give parents updates and weather updates and emergencies. They do a really good job. But just so you know, that's, so we'll review it with them next year. Yeah, yep. Does that sound good?
Yeah, it sounds good.
All right, changes in the handbook.
The only thing I put in the packet, Mr. President, is the things that you gentlemen had talked about. I didn't, I didn't want to put the whole packet back in again.
The ones that are in here?
Mm-hmm.
In the yellow.
Mm-hmm. And the bereavement. You have the bereavement on, God, God forbid anybody would need that type, you know, but you did up that.
Yeah, well. In red color.
Motion to approve the changes in the handbook that's.
I'll make that motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all favor to motion?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
And Mr. President, I did put the DPW clothing policy on the agenda because instead of having, you know, that number in your manual, if you just periodically refer, just to state, we'll follow the DPW clothing policy. That way, if you up, if a board updates the policy, you don't have to update the handbook. I just wanted to throw that out there if you thought that was a good suggestion.
I find it now. But I read one place, the clothing, they get new pants reimbursed, they showed a pair that was like destroyed versus just $100 a year.
I don't, I don't remember that, but.
Read it differently in two different places, though I can't find it, but.
What, what did you?
You have to use the pants up to get new ones.
Well, that's one thing, it said, yeah, you come in, your pants are ripped, okay, you get $100 for a new pair. And the other part says you get $100 a year for.
Get to the end of the year, tear your pants, bring it in.
Which, if you guys are okay with just saying $100 a year.
I think it's just $100 a year.
I already saw that. I read that somewhere today, yeah, so.
It's, it, I mean, they can get multiple pairs. $100 is pretty much a pair of pants. For deep, you know, I, I was under the assumption, because they rip more than one pair of pants.
For $100, you can get a Costco membership and get a couple pairs of pants.
The thing is, if you get the Levi's, they warrant you. The thing is, if you get the Levi's, they warrant you.
They're a little pricier, though.
Yeah, they're like fifty bucks a pair, but you take pictures of the rip and email them in, and they'll give you a credit for a new pair of pants. I just started doing that.
I think Jay's got a.
Oh, Karen, I gave you a card once, uh, red, I believe it's red wing shoes, you know, and I talked to them, and they would be willing to give our DPW guys a discount if they buy their boots there.
Their boots are a lot more than two hundred, but, my, 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 a lot more than two, my husband buys them, they're like four hundred dollars a boot, boots.
The boot is actually made in China, and the chair, the, the, I just doubled the cost of booting boots.
Didn't they used to come out of Minnesota?
They used to.
In Red Wing, Minnesota, right on, right on the river there.
Go to Boot Connection.
In Red Wing, China.
Go to Thoroughgood, they're made in America.
Where I have to go get mine, company paid, so I buy boots from Costco.
Sorry about my pants.
Did you want, did you, did your board just want the DPW policy updated and, uh, employee manual reference their DPW, because it, you could change it, you know, I mean, it doesn't happen very often, but, okay, sounds good.
The president has to be a prison uniform.
With stripes.
Help rather improve that, yeah. All right, moving on to outstanding and count receivable invoices placed in the 2025 tax bill.
Where, where do these things come from?
Those are all the people that we bill for, several, for engineering projects that they had an issue with, um, some, we had to call an engineer in, um, because somebody did some ditching. Sometimes people don't pay their refuse and recyclable bills if they're new, a lot of them are planning and zoning, um, bills that we have, some, sometimes it's an oversight, but we, we sent those out, and, um, we send them a letter to let them know that they have to pay it. And and if the board wants to wait another year, the only reason we do that is when we have our audit. I like that audit to be as clean as possible, so that's why, if there's people that are in arrears for quite some time.
Just put it on the tax bill, right?
Yeah, but but I would, I would need your permission.
Okay, I'll make a motion to put the outstanding account receivable invoices on the 2025 tax bill.
As presented at this meeting, trustee Finch.
Presented at this meeting.
Second.
Those are just the ones in the orange.
Mm-hmm, yeah, the ones that aren't highlighted, they're not residents, and one of the other things board had maybe do is take some of them to small claims court. I always won, but it's a lot of work for a small claim, for some of those, we can talk about those later. The only ones that are urgent are the ones that I actually can put on a tax bill, or, just so the board members know, if they come up with a a story that they need to talk to you about, and they're, that one, those I would not put on because there, there might be something that you would not want to, and it wouldn't matter if, if we didn't put one on, but we just want them to get those bills paid.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Close, motion passes unanimously. Uh, police management contract, refuse recycling, unauthorized village president to sign.
Mr. President, did you want to talk about that in closed session first?
Didn't we have it all figured out last week?
Well, you got some additional, uh, legal comments that you didn't have before. I think you should talk about that in closed session and then, just so you can talk about what the attorney said.
All right, Center Bridge Project and Center Drive.
So, it should be open tomorrow at ten o'clock, we're waiting, they're still, they're still, well, I don't know if they're still working now, but they were, they were there at six o'clock this morning, those, the guys were working, um, they're putting up the guardrails, they're just putting that, it's not that, I don't know what the name of the fabric is, it's not that Jude Manning, but they're putting that real thick, um, some type, I don't know what they called it, you know, for the vegetation to grow.
I'm sure there's tough it spread.
There were four, four engineers from the DOT there today, the general contractor, the Lundy was there, the only one that didn't show up was the DNR, but it was like fifteen people on the inspection, but it's supposed to be open tomorrow at ten AM. Then we'll do a news blast if it opens.
I showed up last week, put it aside.
I know, I'm sorry. Jeff, Jeff was the, I gave him the wrong.
I'll show up at ten tomorrow and shoot a shotgun in the air.
I gave him the wrong date, poor Jeff. They're all looking like, who's this guy?
All right, no parking restrictions on Center Drive near Center Bridge.
Um, I just wanted to ask the board, Mr. Bartholomew, who lives and farms on that road, uh, mentioned, some of the, the slopes on the road are going to be significantly different than they were previously, um, and, um, at the next meeting, when Brett's here to talk to you, you know, just consider portions of that road, no parking, because, because of the slopes and because of where the park, the, the people park sometimes, it's very difficult.
I read this, it's no parking restrictions.
Oh.
No restrictions on parking at all.
Right.
Didn't seem right.
Yeah, I mean, you really had, it should be delineated on a map where, and they were just.
Or at least on one side.
Yeah, no parking at all.
Parking on both sides, it's kind of tough to get through there sometimes.
Especially if you're hauling a trailer.
Yeah, so you just got to, just something for you guys to think about. We'll get more information for you, but that's been a request. It isn't from only Mr., he's not the only farmer, but a lot of the farmers, anybody that's got a, a trailer.
No, it makes sense, and.
Right.
Cool, I brought a statement, I think, and where to.
The road should be a little flatter, you can drive in a straighter line.
Oh, it's really nice, Dylan, wait till you go out, wait till you see it, it looks so, it looks so different than it did before.
You're not going to be hitting your head on the ceiling with a truck as you drive past.
You'll be like, oh, pass now.
It's really nice, 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 nice.
All right, moving on to correspondence and announcements. I would just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Trustee Pecca, you ready to add?
I would like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, be safe, and if you're out going about, you know, hauling sales or whatever, watch other people driving.
And be careful deer hunting.
Oh, yes.
By a weather radio.
Trustee Newman?
Hey, how about?
Oh.
You caught me unprepared.
All right, what I want to say is, on PBS, Ken Burns came out with a new six-part, two-hour each session for the American Revolution. I've already watched the first half. Now, I'm paid to PBS, so they're all there, I can go watch them anytime, but, but they'll replay this a few times for people that, they're just getting, and it's really good. It's really worth the time to watch it, you know, it's, it's.
Are you verifying the accuracy?
Yeah, I was, I was born just about that time. No, but, yeah, but it's a great show, so if you get a chance, try to watch it, I think, for American history, it's really good.
Are they broadcasting these regular times, you get the description?
What they do is, they started it last Sunday from seven to nine, and then nine replays at nine to ten, and they did that six nights in a row. And now it'll be, if you have the PBS website, which I do, you just go and you can watch them anytime you want, but I'm sure they're going to be replaying them on channel thirty-six and run them again, because, so look for it, it's really good.
Trustee Newman?
Nothing that exciting.
Chris Hird?
Nothing.
Karen?
Um, I just wanted to, um, what, obviously wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and hope that all our deer hunters are safe. Remind everyone that Village of Vernon is the only municipality in Waukesha County that allows rifles, which someday you guys got to look into that, because that rifles out here, well, I'll be quiet. We've had several deers versus car accidents in the village, where, and we try, when there are, when there, deers are killed on our road, our guys are really good about picking them up. The county's not so good, but I do have the guy's phone number from the county, uh, to pick up, to pick up the dead deer. Once again, if you could give us your, send us your email for the newsletter, we'll give it right to LPI, they will not sell it or, um, give it to anyone else. Uh, we also, I had a call too, that we've had peddlers in Vernon going door to door, and we, I just want to reiterate, the board has not approved any peddler's permit, so if anyone comes to your door, please call the sheriff's department, because they're not authorized by the village board.
Not numbers.
Yes, yes.
And not a number, yeah.
That's all I have, Mr. President, board members.
Thank you. We have the October twenty, October two thousand twenty-five treasurer's bank reconciliation reports in the packet.
Thank God for Terry and Kelly. Isn't it nice being current on financials?
Oh, my gosh.
Do you need to make a motion to approve those?
Mm-mm.
Okay. Any questions? Other sets?
And Terry always says, if you have any questions, you know, give him a buzz anytime, if you have any questions on his reconciliation reports.
And we have the October EMC medical billing report also in there.
Is that going to be in every report from now on?
I, I like to do them every month.
Every month.
I'm waiting, I am trying to get, because I've had one, a resident and, um, another board member also ask, I said, we're trying to track, I'd like to see a year, year's worth of, um, billing, because I, I did put, I did redact the names, but I, I wanted to show you how that report, and I put that in the public packet also, but then there were some questions, I do have questions, I'm sorry, this isn't on the agenda for discussion, but I'll, I'll put it on the agenda when Jeff comes back and, because I want to give you some more information on, on that billing company.
That sounds good.
You're doing a good job, but I just want you to know things and then, but we'll put it on the agenda.
Wow, yeah, okay.
Finances, accounts payable for November, the amount of, uh, I'm going to do the check in there, it's a hundred dollars less, one hundred eighty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents.
I'll make the motion to approve the accounts payable, batch twenty twenty-five eleven twenty, in the amount of one eighty-two, three thirty-seven, and sixty-three cents.
I'll second it. Any further discussion, if you have any questions, any of them? All right, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Close, motion passes unanimously. Manual checks, there was one.
For one thousand sixty-four oh, six for the postage for the newsletter.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve the manual check in the amount of one thousand sixty-four dollars and six cents.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Trustee Hird, second it. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Close, motion passes unanimously.
Mr. President, we do need a motion on the ACH transactions.
In the amount of one hundred fifty-seven thousand, one hundred forty-five dollars and eighty-four cents.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Close, motion passes unanimously. And, uh, October financial reports.
It's always put in your packet, you know, it doesn't need a formal motion, but if you ever have any questions or an account looks funny, you know, give us a call, let us know.
All right, village board minutes, starting with November fifth on the Center Bridge.
I'll make the motion to approve the November fifth, twenty twenty-five Center Bridge minutes.
I will have to, I will have to remain absent on that one because Ivan's working on it, and he had it during the day.
I'll second.
You second?
Jim.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Close, motion passes unanimously. And minutes on November sixth.
You didn't even need to correct that.
What's that?
The November sixth minutes?
We did, and we mailed, I emailed them out.
I know, I know, now you didn't need to.
Because Dylan said, hey. Yeah, it was just the clarifying, we didn't put the word deny. That's the motion that we have to, we'll bring back next time, just to reconsider.
We approved it through the minutes.
But this.
Motion to approve?
With the correction.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Close, motion passes unanimously. Uh, announcements here on meeting dates, December fourth and December twentieth will be our next village board meetings, December tenth will be the village board and planning commission meeting, DPW and administrative offices will be closed November twenty-seventh to twenty-eighth in observance of Thanksgiving, and December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth in observance of Christmas. You know, motion to go in the closed session for item, that stated in item four.
I'll make the motion to move in the closed session. That stated in agenda item four, is there a second?
I'll second.
Um, by roll call vote, President Jeff Millies, trustee Gary Finch.
Aye.
Trustee Jay Pecca.
Aye.
Trustee Dylan Newman.
Aye.
Trustee Jim Hirth.
Aye.
Mr. President, it's for record, that your village board has unanimously approved to go into closed session by voice vote.
Take care.